We would like to welcome to our meeting and ask that you stand and join us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Duranty?
Here.
Folks is absent, excused at the moment. Rappaport?
Present.
Richards?
I'm here.
Sharp?
Present.
Stackow?
Here.
And Thompson?
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve the August 2nd meeting minutes. Duranty?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stackow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are approved.
At this time in our meeting, if there's anything you'd wish to bring before us that is not on our agenda, this would be the time to do it. Okay, I see none. We'll move right into our first case, which is case 0741A, proposed site plan, special approval for drive-through restaurant. Mr. Ayew.
Thanks, Chair. This property is approximately 42,000 square feet, almost an acre. It's zone CB1, that's our low intensity commercial business district. The site currently contains an existing drive-through restaurant, Long John Silver's. The petitioner today is requesting to demolish and rebuild the existing drive-through restaurant so it'll continue, my understanding is, as a Long John Silver's, once it's rebuilt and Property to the north is zone CB1 and is developed with a Wendy's drive-through restaurant. Property to the south is zone CB1 as well, and you may remember, we approved a site plan there for Captain J's Drive-Thru Restaurant a few months ago, actually with a special land use approval. Property to the east is zone CB1 and is developed with a church. And property to the west, on the opposite side of Wayne Road, again zone CB1 and is developed with Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union, so again, a variety of drive-through restaurants, in addition to one existing at this site, are in the immediate area. The 2018 master plan, future land use designation for this site and neighboring sites is neighborhood commercial slash office services. For some historical context, the city council approved a site plan for Long John Silver's March 7th of 1977, so it's been open for a while. There were some modifications throughout that period, but that's when it received approval. The request for special, I'm sorry, so with the site plan, there are no modifications being proposed to the existing points of ingress and egress. The site will continue to utilize the two existing curb cuts that you see on the site plan and on the aerial image in front of you off of Wayne Road there. The proposal provides more than the required amount of stacking spaces and parking spaces as well. The ordering menu, this is the new site plan here, so the building is being shifted off of Wayne Road a little bit than what exists today. The menu board is going to be here, sort of hidden from the roadway in the rear, in a newly landscaped concrete island. All of the bulk requirements of the CB1 district are being complied with. There's this elevation that details the materials in your packet, but this is sort of a colored rendering that the applicants provided in the site plan package. There is something that the planning department is requesting, if the planning commission makes a recommendation to approve, and that is to condition approval with the landscaping requirements sections outlined in the recommendation, to be satisfied as best as the applicant can, probably cannot meet the full intent, but to satisfy the planning director's recommendations or review during the landscaping review. The site plan as presented does not, I believe, contain a landscaping plan or added landscaping along Wayne Road, and that was the only thing that I had kind of caught. That's about it. We're recommending approval with that condition. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know there's two representatives from Long John Silver's in the audience. Thank you.
Petitors, like to come forward and introduce yourselves?
Thank you. My name's Greg Minchell, and I have Bryce Dalen here with me, and I think the planning director did a great job. I don't have anything to add, other than I can answer any questions you have.
All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up. Anybody on my right wish to speak on this? Anybody on my left? All right? If you have no questions or nothing to add, we'll open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Rappaport.
Sir, thank you very much for appearing before us, and we are happy to see your petition.
I wanted to ask, regarding the planning director's requirement for landscaping, have you had an opportunity to speak to the planning director on this topic?
Well, we spoke briefly, and I was, we'll be happy to comply with that. I don't have any problem with that. Part of our reason that we didn't do anything is there's a nice stand of trees in the northeast corner of the site, existing site, and we're just going to leave that. And there's also a big island with trees on the south side of the site, and we're just going to leave that. So we think there's adequate landscaping to satisfy your requirements, but we'll be happy to add what we need to in the front. That's not a problem.
Well, I would offer that, I'm sure the department is both interested in maintaining the beauty of our, one of our main thoroughfares, and also improving it, if that is at all possible, and I appreciate and applaud your willingness to cooperate with the city's plans to improve and beautify.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I'll cede the floor if there are any more, however, I'm also prepared to do a-
I do have a comment, please.
Commissioner Stackow.
Yeah, through the chair to the petitioner. What type of timeline are you looking at in relationship to the demolition, as well as the reconstruction of the building? Are we-
I think we're past the opportunity to do it this year. I don't think they're going to do it yet this year, so probably start in the spring. That would be my guess.
Okay. And then also, I did have an opportunity to drive by, and the hours of operation, let's just go over that again, because it appeared that your door indicated 11 o'clock, and I think the paperwork, something 10:30 to 10:00 or whatever, just for general population information. What is it that your hours will be for operation, please?
Do you happen to know that, Bryce? I don't, I'm a site designer, so I apologize.
I know the website says 10:30, but I don't think it's still 11:00, but I'm also just a designer.
We'll be happy to clarify that.
Okay. And also to-
Item C on item two suggests that the restaurant will be open 10:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week.
Okay. But when I did go to the door, it was 11 o'clock. That's why I was questioning it.
I think she's right.
Okay. And also too, being that you'll be starting this project next year, and your building will be demolished and rebuilt, did you have any plans for your employees?
That I also can't answer. I'm sorry, I don't do any of the-
Okay, yeah, we're all always concerned about-
Absolutely.
-the workers and keeping them employed. Okay. And that concludes my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Rappaport.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. With regard to case number 0741A, proposed site plan and special land use approval for a drive-through restaurant at Long John Silver's, demolition and rebuild, I'll move to, well, close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and move to send the petition to the city council with a recommendation for approval, conditioned upon landscaping installation be added to the site plan, complying to sections 110-11.3.2 and 110-11.3.3 of the zoning ordinance as reasonably possible, in satisfaction to the planning director.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Duranty. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 0741A with conditions. Duranty?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stackow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good luck when you go to city council, and we're happy that you're staying with us.
Thank you.
And good luck on your new build, and take care.
Thanks.
Hello. Traffic's horrible. Yes.
Coming from Troy. It's crazy.
We'll move into our next case, which is case 0421C, proposed site plan modification for a site plan previously approved for the mosque addition, 37775 Palmer Road. Mr. Ayew.
Thanks, Chairman. The property here is located as approximately 3.5 acres in area, currently zoned, R2, single family residential, and is developed with an existing mosque. The mosque is currently about 8,500 square feet. The building was originally built for Prince of Peace Lutheran Church. The petitioner is requesting site plan approval, well, modification, site plan modification of a previously approved site plan for a 450-square-foot addition for additional restroom space, a 3,000-square-foot new building to accommodate a prayer room, and a 275-square-foot addition for a vestibule area.
Oh, not the prayer.
On March 6th of this year, the city council and the planning commission approved a site plan for a similar addition. However, the petitioner has requested to modify the plans. I'll go over that in more detail in a moment. These modifications require review again by the planning commission and reapproval by the council. Let's go over the modifications. So the previously approved site plan called for this prayer room, about 3,000 square feet, similar, if not exactly the same in size, I believe, to the one being proposed today, but the difference is, this was connected to the building, and now we have about five-foot separation here for a new building instead of just an addition. The height of this building is slightly different than what was previously approved as well. It's about, I believe, four or five feet, let me see here, actually, addition is now separate building, the height of, height of 27 feet, proposed today. The previously approved addition was 17 feet, so about 10 feet taller. The zoning ordinance in this zoning district, the R2 district, allows for 30 feet in height, so they still comply with the ordinance. The second modification was on this previously approved site plan, there was no addition here for restroom areas, and in this one being proposed today, this addition shows up here that is only going to be utilized for an additional restroom area. This vestibule area showed up on the previously approved site plan in March, and it's still there today in the same way. Those are the only modifications. The proposal still complies with all of the bulk regulations, parking, screening, landscaping, and things like that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The planning department is recommending approval, and the mosque is represented, I believe, by these two gentlemen in the front. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would the petitioner come forward and introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Mohammed Siddiqui. I'm the design engineer for this site, okay, and it means the owner of the property, Mr. Mohammed Norman, okay, and our architect is out of town, so if you have any questions-
Sir, is there anything you wish to add?
Yeah, just as we mentioned, that we are just making some few modifications of the previous approved plan, okay, so just one is five feet separation from the existing building, and the height of the building, we're raising the 10 foot, our building.
Very good, very good. Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Anyone? We're going to open up the commission, Commissioner Stackow.
Yes. Hi, good evening. Through the chair to the petitioners. I was glad to see that you took our suggestion as far as adding additional restrooms, because with the amount of people that you have or have not, I'm sure that'll make it much more convenient for you, and that the enlargement of the room, now, is it, my understanding is, is it requires like about nine feet per person when you're doing your prayer sessions? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will be an ample amount of space for you. You're determining that, is that why you enlarged it?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And then also too, there is that space between your new addition and the existing building. Are you planning on having, I know that your architect is out of town, but are you planning on having any type of coverage or something, because I noticed there is a doorway from one structure to the other? Were you planning on having any type of covering through that area, because I didn't see anything?
At this moment, we don't, but maybe in future, we might put some kind of a-
Sure, because when they, yeah, when, yeah, you're, okay. All right, well, I would recommend that that would be a nice addition for you in relationship to your attendees there. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I was just going to close it.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Yeah, so as I recall, when this was before us, previously, we had some commentary, but I remember as we closed our session and left for the day, I encountered some, some people came up to us and wanted to express their, they were late, they got the, they got the timing wrong. And one of the functions of this forum is to bring the concerns of the citizens to your attention, so that if it's possible to address those concerns, you can, it's basically a fair notice kind of a thing. And basically, from the, from the commentary, I was able to explain to them exactly what was going on, but their fear, obviously, was that there was going to be enormous spinnerets and giant, a giant ostentatious building being built, and that is of course not the case. This is a, this is a very low-rising building, and I was able to update their expectations. And I wanted to make you aware that that is, that is a concern that your community has, there's, there's some concern over sightlines, et cetera, and you've, your proposal here is very, very respectful of your neighbors, and I just wanted to say that I do support it. I'll cede the floor.
Any other comments?
No. I was going to close it.
Commissioner Stackow, did you wish to make that proposal?
Oh, sir. I was-
Oh, do you want to?
Yeah, I was-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
I move to send case number 0421C, proposed site plan modification for a site plan previously approved for a mosque addition at 37775 Palmer Road, south side of Palmer, between John Hicks and Newburgh, to city council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, seconded by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 0421C. Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stackow?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Very good, gentlemen. Good luck when you go to city council.
Thank you so much.
We're glad to see that you're able to move forward with your addition.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will move into our next case, which is case 1701F, proposed site plan approval for oil change shop, 6555 North Newburgh Road. Mr. Ayew.
Okay, thanks, Chairman. The subject property here, it's actually outlined in red, is located at the southwest corner of Newburgh and Warren Roads. As you know, the property was recently split off from the Lowe's parent parcel outlined in yellow to create a, and rezoned to create a buildable outlot. Let's see here. The applicant is now requesting today, site plan approval to actually build the almost 1,500-square-foot oil change shop. The oil change shop has three bays, you can sort of see them here on the site plan. Site access is proposed via acts of variety of access easements, which there is a draft easement drawn up for between Take Five Oil Change and Lowe's. It already seems and appears to be agreed upon, but that's how access will be granted into and out of the site. A curb and gutter will be constructed around, almost around the entire perimeter of this oil change shop to kind of delineate the property and separate it from the Lowe's parking area and traffic circulation area. There are six off-street parking spaces provided to accommodate the number of employees at the busiest time/shift, which is the requirement per the zoning ordinance. The proposed building will be constructed primarily with brick and stone paneling materials and systems. A rendering is here on your screen and attached in your backup. There's a landscaping plan that is also provided and is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, showing shrubs and trees along Newburgh that mostly exist, but with the addition of some along that frontage and along, or throughout the site as well. There is one dumpster being constructed here to the north, facing away from Newburgh, being screened by landscaping, trees and shrubs, and also a concrete masonry, or is it trex? I forget.
It's a bluey's masonry.
Masonry screening wall, thank you. The site needs a few setbacks. It needs a setback for the front yard. The required is 35 feet, the proposed setback is 13 feet, and this is sort of as a result of a property shift that the city asked for, actually, city engineering for, so they sort of provided the city with additional land, or AKA, right-of-way, which it is now. They also need a variance for the height. The height is permitted to be 13 feet 3 inches, because that's what the front yard setback is, but the proposal calls for 16 feet 3 inches. Other than that, everything else in terms of bulk requirements in the CB4 district is being complied with. The administration and planning department are recommending approval, subject to the variances being granted by the zoning board. They are on the, I believe, October 18th zoning board meeting, requesting those variances. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Drew Barclay. I'm with Driven Brands Take Five, the proposed developer for this oil change shop. I appreciate you taking our proposal into consideration. I just want to say that we are excited about opening up the shop here in Westland. We have one in Warren that's already open, another one that's opening up, and we have one, I believe, down in Monroe area, so we're kind of expanding a little bit in the area. We're excited to be part of this community, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Anything you wish to add to this?
Not at this time. Mr. Ayew did a great job, as usual.
Yeah. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? We'll open up the commission. Commissioner, Commissioner Rappaport.
I apologize if it's already been mentioned. What is the function of that diagonal object on the site plan?
Oh, by the dumpster? That is the concrete pad. Typically, use a heavy-duty concrete where the dumpsters and the, what the garbage trucks will be. We use kind of medium-duty concrete throughout the site, and then the heavy-duty pad. Yeah, it's-
This is what happens when an engineer draws a site plan-
And that's a pretty-
I'm going to have to get over my-
Other than the architect.
... preference for parallel perpendicular-
And that's a pretty big one.
It is a big one.
Extra heavy-duty. I did not design that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
I really have nothing, nothing of substance to comment on this particular topic.
Okay. Commissioner Stackow.
No, this is my evening, I guess. All right. Through the chair to administration, please.
Yes, of course.
In regards to the variances that are required, with our approval this evening, would we also then be including the variances as well?
Sure, good question. Variances or deviations being requested from the zoning ordinance can only be approved by the zoning board of appeals, so while you can reprove the site plan, the variances still need to be approved by the zoning board.
Okay.
Which they've applied for and will be heard by the zoning board on October 18th.
And then that happens after council before council?
It doesn't really matter. There's not really a preference by the administration. We can always condition approvals if they come before or after, but in this specific case, it is happening before city council approval.
I believe so.
Yep.
So I think next Wednesday is the zoning board.
Correct.
I'm not sure-
And we can have the zoning board condition the approval of the variances based on city council approving the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
And then also too, with your customer parking as well, then you'll be sharing that area and any other parking with the Lowe's?
Well, with the Take Five concept, we don't have customer parking, because our customers do not get out of their car during the oil change.
Oh, okay.
Typically, the oil change takes less than 10 minutes.
Oh, nice.
They pull in, we service the vehicle. We don't do extensive service, we just do oil changes, wipers, fluids, the basic stuff. They stay in their car, they're on the way, so the parking is strictly for the-
For employees, right?
And we won't be sharing any parking with the Lowe's. We have the six standard spaces, and I think we have one ADA space on our site.
That were designated for your employees.
So we won't be sharing with Lowe's.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Motion's in order. Commissioner Richards?
I don't know, I thought he was going to do it. He was reaching out. I mean, I can. I'm on it. If I may be recognized.
Very good, sir.
Regarding case number 1701F, proposed site plan approval for an oil change shop at 6555 North Newburgh Road, motion to send the, send the proposal along to the city council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon variances being granted by the zoning board of appeals and otherwise- and otherwise subject to departmental requirements and recommendations.
I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, second by Commissioner Thompson. Roll call, please.
Sorry, just writing this down. Okay. Roll call vote to approve case number 1701F. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Stackhouse.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Sir, happy to have you in our community.
Thank you.
Look forward to your, your build and hope your business goes well for you.
Thank you very much.
Even though you're using diagonal lines.
Yeah, that kind of, it's, it fits. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into our next case, which is case 1315B, proposed site plan modification for site plan previously approved for the conversion of a vacant church into condominiums. Mr. Ayew.
Thanks, Chairman. The property here is located on the southwest corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Merriman. It's about six acres in, in area. The property is currently zoned GAR, garden apartment residential, currently developed with a vacant church building. The petitioner is proposing a two-phase or two-part project. Phase one is to repurpose the existing church building into 24 apartment units. And phase two proposes construction of six separate buildings around the perimeter of the property that will contain a total of 43 condo units. The application is requesting site plan approval tonight for both phases of the project. This same or similar project was previously approved by the city council, reviewed by the planning commission previous to that, on March 21st, 2022. The previous site plan approval has since expired, but this site plan remains similar. The number of units, however, has increased from 64 to 67. The design changes are only really pertinent to the elevations, and I'll show you what those look like in a moment. There has also been a change or an addition of investors, and I think they would be able to better comment on it than I would be, the petitioner who's in the audience. Let's see, okay. I'd like to go over some design elements just really quickly. In phase one, the petitioner proposes to convert, as I previously mentioned, the existing one-story church to accommodate apartment-style residential units. These are going to be 24 one-bedroom apartment units. In phase two, the petitioner proposes to construct those six two-story buildings that will contain the 43 apartment units mentioned earlier. They're going to be a mix of two-story, I'm sorry, two-bedroom and three-bedroom units with a 1.5 attached garage. The church exterior will be renovated using composite siding and Eiffel materials. The proposed six buildings will be constructed with brick, with brick and stone on the first floor and siding on the second floors. This is what the previously approved rendering looks like. It was a more modern look. The applicants, based off limited conversation, feel like this product is more appropriate for the city and the target audience. The site will utilize one parking, or one curb cut here off of Ann Arbor Trail. It's a, it's a, kind of promotes the one-way-in, one-way-out type of curb cut. The parking complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the petitioner is proposing landscaping. I don't have the landscaping plan here on the screen. It's in your backup, but proposing landscaping along Ann Arbor Trail and Merriman as well. There is, I believe this was back at the previous meeting in March of last year, a hot topic. There are three dumpsters being proposed on the site, one here, one here, and one here. Those are, those dumpster closures will be built using a Trex paneling system. Other than that, the bulk requirements, the setbacks, the height, the lock coverage, minimum dwelling areas, which someone mentioned earlier, and parking are all being complied with. Another topic raised at the last planning commission meeting for this in March of last year was the guest parking. 136 parking spaces are being required. 136 parking spaces are being provided, and 14 of those are required guest parking spaces per the ordinance. That's a street view of, of the vacant church that I'm sure you all have seen. And that's all I have. The administration and planning commission, planning department are recommending approval.
Thank you, sir.
If you have any questions.
Gentlemen, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself?
Thank you for having us. My name is Bill Chabon. This is Gus Bedun, partner, also contractor.
Very good. Anything you wish to add?
He actually summed it up pretty good.
He does, he does an excellent job. He does a miss things.
We're obviously excited with this project and looking forward to working with you guys.
Yeah. Very good. We will open it up to the commission.
I have some questions.
You got questions, yes.
Oh, actions. Did you want, do you want to go first?
I will, because I know how long you'll take, so.
Okay, go, go.
Yeah, my, my question's quick, is quick. The second phase for the condos, are those going to be purchased or rental condos?
Rentals.
They're all rentals?
Everything rental.
Okay. That was my question.
Well, thank you. Now, I'm going to take longer than I thought. Hi, folks. Thank you so much for, for your proposal before us today. I, I had a question, and I don't know if it's best directed towards the administration or you gentlemen. I see item number seven, as, as Mo pointed out, 136 parking spaces required, 136 parking spaces provided, 14 of which, as required, are guest spaces. But I don't see any set aside for, for handicap parking?
There is.
There is definitely spots for handicap.
There's, I'm not exactly sure on this print, but there is. We, I can't see that far, but...
There definitely is. If there's not, we will definitely have handicap.
It's mandatory.
And so have handicap and how much? I'm, I'm actually curious, the, the number of spaces that you're planning to set aside for. Of those 136 parking spaces, how many? And I don't want to pin you down on something that's actionable.
We're going to meet whatever requirements.
But certainly ballparking?
Yes, we're going to meet whatever requirements by the city. So if they say ask for eight or 10, we're going to meet those requirements.
It's not an issue.
Okay, and will you be, will you be interested or willing to adjust those up in the event that you're, that you have actual tenants that are, that are handicapped?
Absolutely, absolutely. But if we do get handicapped...
And I, and I do like to ask stupid questions.
No, no.
You are, of course, building in compliance with the, with the Americans with Disabilities Act, making sure that you're, that you're handicap accessible?
Yes, yes.
So, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, just a question. Are, is it assigned parking or it's just open parking?
It's going to be open.
It's going to be, well, for the condos, it's going to be their own park in the driveways. And they will, but it's going to be basically an open parking.
Okay. All right.
We could do a sign, but I think...
Well, the condos is basically, it's from the condo is pretty much assigned because adjacent to their driveway.
Yeah.
Everything else can be open.
Okay. Because I know in some areas, they say this is your spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Get upset if somebody parks in your spot, so.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Motion's in order?
No, I'd like, I have a question, please.
Commissioner Stackhouse.
Okay. Yeah, hi, good evening. Now, the apartments that you're making, I understand that they're like about 750 square feet, which is kind of smaller. Are you planning on having this geared towards seniors or, or just anyone who's interested in that type of living?
Honestly, I'm not looking for no 20s or 30s. I don't want no party area. You know, I'm looking for the older clientele. 758 is a one-bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
So...
That's a one-bedroom.
So that's going to be the, the existing church. So basically, we are looking for the older population. Nothing, I don't want a headache. I don't want to be, hey, what do we build here? No, we're looking for long-term renters that's going to be with us for a long time.
And I do have to tell you, thank you for doing this, because that building is just really a site. So, yeah, and let's see what else. Oh, and then there's also, when I drove by, you, I see from the plans you have one driveway. But then at the other end of the lot, there was another driveway there. Are you planning on closing that entire off? And then there was one off of...
A one entry with one...
Merriman as well.
We'd like a one entry with in and out. Be a double Y, so they can go in and out on the same entries. Keep the place, I think, people that should not be there to come in.
Be more controlled.
Complex, yes, be more controlled. We want to put like trees and bushes to cover that up. You know, make it a more private area, but I think one entrance in and out is probably best for that community.
Okay, and then that driveway will be accessible in case there's fire engine that needs to come in or something larger like that? Or maybe even deliveries as well, you know?
Absolutely.
Especially nowadays with Amazon, right? But no, my, my, my concern was is that it was going to be wide enough, because I see that you only have that one access.
It's pretty wide. Two cars, one can come in and leave at the same time.
Uh-huh.
One have, it's, it's, God forbid, if like an EMS or...
Yeah.
A fire station, you know, God forbid, it's got to have its free access in and out. We plan that out in our, in our drawings and stuff like that.
Okay. So then that whole area that normally, there's a driveway that goes out to Merriman, that would be closed off?
Correct.
For your, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, Judge.
Yes.
I move to send case number 1315B, proposed site plan modification for a site plan previously approved for the conversion of a vacant church into a condominium development at 31463 Ann Arbor Trail, southwest corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Merriman, to city council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, seconded by Commissioner Folks. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to approve case number 1315B. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Stackhouse.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Gentlemen?
I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Look forward to your, your build there. It seemed like it's going to be a lot, but we're happy to have you in the city.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck as you go to council. Mr. Ayew, do you have anything?
I do not. Enjoy your month. Happy Halloween, and we probably won't have a...
No meeting in November?
So happy Thanksgiving, too.
Okay. Nothing on the agenda for November? No, there's something in December. Motion's in order to adjourn.
So moved?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.